Well, good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Public Meeting.
Yes, before we begin the public meeting, we'll be having a special review session. This is Wednesday, May 8th, and the time is 10 o'clock. The first item on the agenda -- oh, and a quorum is present. The first item on the agenda is a city council modification for a zoning text amendment concerning 270 Park Avenue. Do you want me to summarize it, or do you guys want to do it? Okay, Scott Williamson will give you a summary.
Good morning, Commissioners. On March 27 of 2019, the Commission voted to approve the text amendment proposed by J.P. Morgan Chase for the site at 270 Park Avenue. The text amendment allows for additional location and design flexibility for a required public space within a future redevelopment of the site. The city council has proposed to modify the text and is requesting the Commission's scope determination of that modification prior to its stated meeting later today. To accommodate the city council's request, this special review session has been scheduled in order for the Commission to vote on its scope determination. As you recall, the text amendment allows flexibility in location and design of the mandatory public space. The city council modification seeks to clarify that this flexibility is only available to zoning lots that existed before the date of adoption of the text amendment. The Department believes the modification by city council is within scope. I'll also note that this modification is consistent with how the proposal was presented by the applicant and with the assumptions in the project's environmental assessment statement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the Commission? It struck us as straightforward, and the council had asked us to expedite it, and we were very happy to oblige. So I'll ask by an assent by show of hands to send a letter to the council saying it's within scope. Thank you. And so now, we end the review session and start the public meeting.
I will note for the record that Commissioner Cirillo is recused on that matter. And that concludes the special review session Wednesday, May 8th. The time is 10:02.
Okay, Madam Secretary.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting, held at the New York City City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway. Today is Wednesday, May 8th, 2019. As a courtesy during the proceedings, we ask that you please turn off all cell phones and electronic devices. All speakers should fill out a speaker's card. In addition, we ask that those providing testimony, please identify yourselves, limit your remarks to three minutes, and speak clearly into the microphone. I will now call the roll. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Here.
Commissioner Capelli.
Here.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Here.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Wednesday, April 24th, 2019.
On the minutes, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved.
Next is scheduling. On calendar numbers one through five, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, May 22nd, 2019, for a public hearing to be held at the New York City City Planning Commission Hearing Room, Lower Concourse 120 Broadway.
On the resolution, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the report section on page 10. Borough of Manhattan, calendar numbers six and seven, CD 9, number six, C 190127, PQM, number seven, C 190128, HAM, in the matter of applications for the acquisition of property, UDEP designation, project approval, and disposition of city-owned property concerning 437 West 126th Street. For favorable reports on calendar numbers six and seven, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead. Favorable reports have been adopted on calendar numbers six and seven. Borough of Queens, calendar number eight, CD 2N190036ZRQ, in the matter of an application for a zoning text amendment concerning Court Square, Block 3. For a favorable report on calendar number eight, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number eight. Borough of Queens, calendar number nine, CD 13, C 180517MMQ, in the matter of an application for a city map amendment concerning the JFK North site. For a favorable report on calendar number nine, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Recused.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
A favorable report has been adopted on calendar number nine. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 10, three -- or, excuse me, CD 2N190201ZAR, in the matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning 3 Helena Road. For adoption on calendar number 10, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Yes.
Calendar number 10 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 11, CD 3N190294RCR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 470 and 472 Wilson Avenue. For adoption on calendar number 11, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead. Calendar number 11 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 12, CD 2N190319ZCR, in the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 166 Benedict Road. For adoption on calendar number 12, Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Cirillo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Ouz.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampershead. Calendar number 12 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the public hearing section on page 19. Borough of the Bronx, calendar numbers 13 and 14, CD 1, number 13, C 190292HUX, number 14, C 190293HAX, a public hearing in the matter of applications for UDEP designation, project approval, and the disposition of city-owned property concerning 784 Cortlandt Avenue and the Fourth Amendment to the Melrose Commons Urban Renewal Plan.
We're going to have a 10-minute team presentation by a team comprised of Teri Arroyo, Randall Powell, Roland Powell, Sarah Arnold, and Ted Weinstein.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Teri Arroyo, representing the applicant HPD. We are here to propose the development of a seven-story mixed-use building with approximately 20 affordable rental units, commercial space, and community facility space on two contiguous vacant city-owned lots on the northeast corner of Cortlandt Avenue and East 157th Street, specifically Block 2404, Lots 1 and 2. This project was selected in 2016 as a result of an MWBE Building Opportunity Request for Proposals, designed to develop vacant city-owned sites through the creation of 100% affordable housing. In addition, the project area is Site 15 within the Melrose Commons Urban Renewal Area. Under the plan, Site 15 has a land use designation of residential and currently has a height restriction of only 45 feet. HPD proposes to amend the plan by adding Site 15 to a list of sites exempt from the height restriction. This change will facilitate development pursuant to the existing R7-2 zoning, which allows for a building height of 85 feet and a max street wall of 75 feet. To facilitate the project, HPD seeks approval of the following actions. First, designation of the project area as an urban development action area and approval of the project as an urban development action area project. Second, disposition of the city-owned project area to a developer to be determined by HPD. And three, an amendment to the Melrose Commons Urban Renewal Plan to remove the height restriction of 45 feet on urban renewal Site 15. With the completion of this project, the total number of newly constructed affordable units within the Melrose Commons Urban Renewal Area will exceed 3,600, and this application was unanimously approved by the Community Board and the Borough President. I will now turn it over to the members of the development team, who are here to present the project and answer some questions. HPD is also available to answer questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's having a good day. My name is Randall Powell. I'm one half of the development team, MWBE Infinite Horizons. I'm joined here by my brother, who's also the other owner of Infinite Horizons. I'll go through briefly and not go into too much detail, but the development team consists of Infinite Horizons as the MWBE developer, along with MBD Community Housing Corporation, a nonprofit co-developer in the Bronx, as well as FGPH Corporation, a general contractor, and OCV Architects. This team was selected because of their wherewithal, their ability to be able to execute a project of this size, scale, and scope within the Bronx. As you can see, here's a city planning map of the site and the location in the Melrose area that Teri just detailed. Here are some site photos of the location and the current condition. Again, the project will be a seven-story, 20-unit building with approximately 1,800 square feet for a commercial retail space on the frontage of Cortlandt Avenue, as well as a community facility space that will be about two stories, consisting of roughly 5,000 square feet. And the remaining parts of the building will be utility spaces and cellar spaces in the basement for a total gross square footage of roughly 30,000 square feet. Here's the south elevation of the building, as well as the west elevation of the building. I'm going to hand the mic over to our design team, represented by Sarah Arnold, OCV, to discuss in further detail the layouts of the floor plans.
Thank you. Good morning. How do you make it go to the next -- okay. Which makes it go to the -- okay. I'm going to start on the first floor, which is the entry floor. This building has three distinct entries. The main residential entry is on Cortlandt. The main commercial entry is on Cortlandt, and the community facility entrance is on East 157th Street. The commercial space also has, besides the large space on the first floor with a very open storefront, it has a storage space in the cellar, in addition to that first-floor space. The community facility actually spans three stories. So you enter on the first floor, then there's additional space in the cellar, which is in the lower right-hand corner of the cellar. And then, you can either take a stairs for active circulation, or a full handicap-accessible elevator to the second floor, wherein you really have a very large generous space. Going back to the first floor, the residential entrance off of Cortlandt takes up a minimal amount of space. You have your scissor stairs and your elevator, fire stairs, and your emergency egress. Okay, moving up to the second floor, as has been mentioned, there are 20 units, and the first of the three BRs are on the second floor. The third floor is probably the most dynamic and interesting space. Here, you have primarily residential, in addition to which you have the required recreational space, which is 500 and somewhat square feet. I can't read the number from here. And that is place adjacent to the laundry. Both of those spaces have direct access to a garden, leading out to, like, basically an exterior space, which we plan to have it landscaped and planted. So this gives a nice adjacency between the recreational space and the laundry, and a play space that you can be invited to go outside as well. The typical floor, four through seven, proceeds in residential capacity. We have essentially fit as many units as we could, obviously, into the package. We have a number of two bedrooms in addition to one-bedrooms and three-bedrooms. There are no studios in this particular project. And the reason being is that we're looking for a more family and a very community-oriented building, which is small enough so that people get to actually know each other and share spaces together.
At this particular juncture, the development team has reached out to the community. We spoke to the local school, which is across the street on 157th Street side, and we also reached out to one of the tenant body presidents of the NITRE building across the street, and they were both very receptive to the building and the project at this particular time. And we told them that we would come back on a regular basis to update them regarding the progress of the project and next steps moving forward, and they are aware of the city planning meeting coming up. This is a little bit more detail regarding the bedroom distribution for one-bedrooms, 11 two-bedrooms, 5 three-bedrooms, for a total of 20 units. And at this point, I will transition over to Ted to close out. But that is pretty much the entire project, and looking forward to the next steps in bringing a great project to the community. And again, this is a home outside of larger sites, and we look to provide a great project to the neighborhood. So thank you very much, Commissioners, for your time.
Questions from the Commission. Commissioner De La Ouz.
Hi, thanks for being here. Could you tell us a little bit more about Infinite Horizons, about your experience, and also about the roles that you all will have, your role versus MBD's role? That would be helpful. And then, if you have an intended user for the community facility space, as you said, it's pretty extensive, so I'm just wondering what kind of demand there is and what kind of things you've lined up. And then, the depth of affordability, if you could talk about that, and what the likely financing is from HPD.
Sure. Infinite Horizons was started back in 2007. My brother and I came up with this idea of creating a development company, because we're originally from southeast Jamaica, Queens. And during that particular period of time, there was a lot of foreclosure disinvestment in southeast Jamaica parts of Brooklyn, and we felt like we wanted to actually give back to the community. So that's why we started Infinite Horizons. This particular development team came about because of our relationship of working in affordable housing for over 15 years. You know, I was a former vice president for MBD Community Housing, where I did their affordable housing development, as well as their property management. Derek Lovett, you know, he is my mentor, and actually has been a great support base for me as I decided to venture out on my own with my brother. And he was very supportive of us actually going into this particular RFP. So they are the nonprofit developer. Again, the development structure is 52% towards the MBE, 24% towards the nonprofit, and 24% toward the other development partner, which is FGPH. FGPH is a general contractor based out in Massapeh, Queens. They have a track record of doing over, you know, 2,000-plus units annually. They've been around since 1997. They are a very well-known builder in the affordable housing world. They've worked with a lot of the best nonprofits in the city. With that, we felt like it was a good match. And I've actually known OCV from a prior life, when I was working as a project manager in the city. And, you know, I've always talked to Jack about my goals of being a developer, and, you know, he had an ambition to help somebody start up. So that's where the relationship of OCV comes in. The affordability is based off what we see in the community and the community needs. So the AMI tiers are going to range from 30% of AMI to 80% of AMI. We're looking at a new construction program because of the size. They have a better financing model when it comes to infill sites, and they consider this a smaller infill site. We'll also be seeking low-income housing tax credit financing. These conversations are ongoing with the city as we start to vet out the project, as we move through the paces.
Other questions?
And the community -- thank you for that. That's really helpful. Best of luck with the Lytec for a project of this size. Can you talk a little bit about the community facility space as well?
Oh, yeah, sorry about that. So we've actually reached out to several brokers, and one relationship is kind of coming to fruition, is starting to bub. We were thinking about including a senior daycare facility, maybe a grocery store, a fresh market, something that the community feels is different. We've actually spoken to the community in terms of any suggestions that they may have when it comes to that space. It's still a little bit earlier out, so to get somebody to hook on to the -- committing to the project at this stage has been somewhat challenging, but we've been pushing to get LOIs from the various interested parties, and hopefully be able to bring that to the table shortly.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Thank you. I guess this question is for the architect. Could you talk about the materials, the dark and the light materials of the facade?
Yes. The entire bottom of the building for the first story on Cortlandt, and then for the first two stories on 157th Street, is brick. And then, as you can see, there's also a portion of the upper part that's brick. The other portion that you see above the first story is stucco, and we have inserted a rainscreen panel of a bright color to add a little bit of warmth and difference to the facade. Now, I will say that in the transition of these drawings to multiple prints and then to the slideshow itself, the colors have gotten washed out a little bit. And in fact, these colors are warmer than they appear in the photo. So we're looking here at actually a stucco with more warmth to it. It's going to be much more on the warm side than what you see here. And the brick, which got very dark in the image, is going to be on the dark side, but will also be lighter and warmer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bernie.
I just wanted to follow up on that question about the stucco. When you say stucco, do you mean cement stucco, or do you mean the vinyl-coated EFS system?
Okay, pardon me, yeah. To be clear, EFS.
Yes.
We have extensive insulation around the building, obviously to satisfy the energy coat and so on and so forth. So we're looking at a very tight envelope here, well-enclosed and very well-insulated.
I mean, the problem with the EFS, of course, is that it does not have the longevity that brick has. It tends to delaminate after a time, and I think it would be a better building if it were brick on the facade, or proper cement stucco on the facade. I've seen many of the EFS buildings where the vinyl starts to peel after seven or eight years, and I think that's possibly an issue. I know there are cost considerations and insulation considerations, but that would be my comment. I had two other questions. Did HPD, in its design review, apply the active design guidelines to this project? In other words, things like encouraging stair use by putting glazing in the doors, improving the lighting and the finishes in the staircase, possibly getting daylight into the staircase to encourage more active use of the stairs, and other things?
I will say that we made particular efforts in the community facility space to have open stairs that are inviting, wide stairs, 7/11 proportion, treads to risers. We currently, for egress -- let me see if I can go back, hold on. We are compelled, for space considerations, to have a scissor stair, which in and of itself does not loan itself to extensive use of glass.
Well, it can. I mean, the building code was actually modified, the fire code, to allow more glazing in the fire stairs, so you can. I mean, there are other examples of HPD projects where the stairs have been opened up, made more attractive and more usable.
I like the comment very much. I really support the active -- also, young people, for speed and everything, they like to use the stairs. And why not make them inviting? So yes, I think we're going to do everything we can there in terms of lighting, in terms of finishes, and we're definitely going to look at the incorporation of glass into the stair doors in as much as we can.
Thank you. Could you go back to the first image again? And I just have one very minor comment.
The --
The very first slide that you heard.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a small thing, but I'm assuming that that light fixture is just kind of artistic license by the architects, it's not in the DOT portfolio of fixtures. There is actually a very attractive, modern fixture that DOT now has in its catalog, so I would recommend you use that one.
Thank you so much, yeah. I think that is a placeholder. It's just pointing at time.
Commissioner Rampershead.
Sticking with the architect. Quick question. Will there be mechanical equipment on the roof?
Oh, I completely forgot about the roof. Okay, we have proposed solar equipment on the roof. Budget-wise, I'm not sure exactly where we stand with that. I think it's not clear right now exactly how much we can get, how many we can get.
It was going to be two questions. Number one, will the solar panel placement be in compliance with the fire code, because the fire department would need access to the roof?
Of course, that's a good point, yes. The fire department needs access both to the front and to the side of the building, and will provide a minimum of what FDNY wants. Usually, it's six feet clear, I believe.
Right.
As well as six feet in front of the exit stairs. So we have every intention to provide that, yes.
And just one last technical question. With the cellar, are you guys going to be underpinning the adjacent neighboring building, or their footings are deep enough to match up with what you're proposing? Because I see you have community facility downstairs, so I take --
Yeah, we do. We have a significant cellar, and we plan to do underpinning, yes.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
Continuing on the architectural front, I noticed that this project will comply with the Enterprise Green standards.
Yes, it will.
Are there any unique features, particular features, that you'd like to highlight for us? I guess the solar is something you're attempting to include. You've mentioned insulation. Are there other sustainable features that you --
Well, again, yes, the solar, which we talked about. We're heating and cooling the units with PTAC units, heat pumps. We're, you know, as per code, going with the most efficient units we can possibly get. In addition, as discussed previously, in terms of the envelope, it's a very closed seal and well, you know, sealed envelope. So -- So we're looking to reduce heat loss and reduce heat gain. We are using, of course, highly insulated windows, low U-value, argon-filled, everything that the technology of today allows. In most cases, we have gone to the vinyl window because, again, it's proved to be quite cost-effective and good in terms of insulating.
And then, in memory of our departed, well, not, she's still on this planet, Commissioner Cheryl Lefron, who would want to ask you if she were here about broadband access for your tenants. Will the building be equipped with broadband?
Yes, whatever the provider is, we will provide either Spectrum, Verizon, whatever the provider is into the, into the building for their, to have service, yes.
Commissioner Deloos.
I know you're being asked a lot of tough questions, especially for a project that only has 20 units. And I know it's often, it's often tough to kind of maximize, you know, the public benefit on all the different pieces, especially in a unit of, a project of this size. I guess the question I have is, in your analysis and kind of coming up with, like, how much of this was going to be community facility space in particular, and of course, the retail, I mean, if you find that there isn't a market for a community facility space of that size, do you have flexibility to make those residential units?
That's up to the determination of HPD at this point. I mean, we provided our proposal based off of the guidelines of the RFP, and we were held to those guidelines. When we get further along to the project, you can have that follow-up conversation with them. But what we designed was based off of, you know, the best possible use for the site at that time. That definitely included the community.
I mean, I appreciate that, and I, you know, I don't know enough about the local community, and certainly you're partnering with Derek, and he knows a lot. So I would just, you know, I would ask HPD that if, for the project's long-term viability, if you need to look at, you know, a reconfiguration of the, you know, the proportion of residential to other uses so that you have a viable project for the long term, like, I would hope that they would be open to that based on current conditions and current community needs, rather than when an RFP was issued a couple of years ago.
Well, thank you for that.
The only problem would be that it's maxed out on the residential already.
And that's because of zoning. Yeah, I got that. Well, here we are to potentially think about that, aren't we? So I would.
I'll give the architects a break by asking a question for HPD. I wondered why this was a sale rather than a 99-year lease, which I thought was your current practice.
Excuse me, no. Actually, our practice has been and continues to be, when we do financing of city property like this, that we do sales. The only time that I'm aware that we're doing, that we're participating in projects with 99-year leases are when somebody else, another agency is the lead, like EDC seems to prefer that, NYCHA seems to prefer that right now. But we have been doing, I can't say without exception, but certainly the practice is that we do sales. Our legal staff essentially just thinks that's better.
Thanks for the clarification. Other questions? Okay. Thank you to the applicant team. They are the only people who have signed up to speak on this matter, but if anyone else is present and wants to be heard, please come forward. Public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar number 15, CD1, C180315ZMQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 3801 23rd Avenue rezoning.
We'll have a 10-minute presentation by the applicant team comprised of Rachel Skoll and Todd McAluso.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Skoll. I'm an associate at Greenberg Charig. We represent 23rd Avenue Realty LLC. The applicant seeking a rezoning to map a C23 commercial overlay to a depth of 150 feet from the north side of 23rd Avenue on the block between the east side of 38th Street and the west side of Steinway Street. And I'm joined by Todd McAluso, who's here on behalf of the applicant. Currently, the portion of the rezoning area within 100 feet of the northern side of 23rd Avenue and within 100 feet of the western side of Steinway Street is in an R5D residential zoning district. The remainder of the rezoning area is in an R5B residential zoning district, as you can see marked on this tax map. The proposed rezoning would not change the underlying districts, which were put in place as part of the 2010 Astoria rezoning. Our client owns 3801 23rd Avenue, Queens Block 805 Lot 1, outlined there in red. An approximately 17,000-square-foot lot improved with a four-story, 50-foot-tall building with a one-story portion on the interior of the L-shaped lot. You can see the building here. The building was constructed in 1912 as part of the Astoria Silkworks complex. It contains approximately 48,700 square feet of floor area. The uses in the building have been legal noncomforming uses since the enactment of the 1961 zoning resolution. The building itself is legal noncomplying with respect to bulk and is overbuilt by approximately 19,000 square feet. Today, the building contains a mix of residential and commercial uses, including offices, music rehearsal and production space, an acupuncturist, a tattoo artist, a CrossFit-style gym, and a yoga studio, which I will discuss in a little bit more detail. Another view of the building from 23rd Avenue. The rezoning area also encompasses Lot 61, 64, and Lot 160 on the same block. Lot 61 is improved with a two-story mixed-use building housing an auto body shop, building supply, and residential uses. It is the yellow and black auto body shop sign that you see there on 23rd Avenue, as well as the two-story building you see on the right here viewed from Steinway Street. Lot 64 is improved with a three-story mixed-use building on the left there, housing residential uses and a cafe with a garage along 23rd Avenue, which you can see in the center of this image. Lot 160, fronting on Steinway Street on the right here, is improved with a three-story residential building. There is no development or enlargement proposed in connection with this rezoning. Rather, the rezoning will align the zoning of this primarily non-residential character of this portion of the block and will allow for the orderly, orderly and lawful transition of uses in this area in the future. The rezoning will also allow the yoga studio and CrossFit gym in the applicant-owned building to seek physical culture establishment special permits from the Board of Standards and Appeals in order to legalize those two uses. Those two tenants would be seeking the PCE special permits following this proposed rezoning. The reason we are seeking the rezoning now is that several years ago, the building owner started to receive violations and some unwanted attention from the Department of Buildings, some of which concern the two PCE tenants, which opened in the building in 2014. In 2015, when the owner tried to update the building certificate of occupancy to address DOB's concerns, it was discovered that back in the early '70s, a neighbor had filed paperwork with DOB to merge his lot and the owner-owned lot. We worked with DOB on this issue for two years, and it was eventually determined that the merger of the two zoning lots was done in error. The record has since been corrected. They are two separate zoning lots. With that problem out of the way, we have been able to pursue this rezoning, which would allow the PCE tenants to pursue BSA special permits. And this in turn will allow DOB to fully update the CO to legalize every, all the uses in the building. I also wanted to clarify one point from Monday's review session. The building did receive complaints and violations in the '90s. This was for a use in the cellar contrary to the certificate of occupancy then in place. The CO was updated in July 1998 to legalize this use, which are the music studios in the cellar of the building, and those do appear on the CO now. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Commissioner Ortiz.
I mean, perhaps more of a comment. I think it's, it's striking what this property owner has had to go through to allow for two uses that increasingly are more viable uses than, than retail at this time. And so I think it's a moment to think about what, what it is that we are, you know, the framework that's, that's creating this, this challenge. And I'm sure it's been incredibly expensive for this owner, so let's.
I'll actually note that as part of the focus on updating the zoning resolution to encourage job-generating uses, one of the things that we've identified is the outmoded PCE requirement. We've seen, I'd say, most recently in the Bay Street rezoning, the fact that we've eliminated that. And I'll note that it's with the full support of the BSA. They realize that times have changed, and limitation of PCEs to a relatively narrow subset of commercial districts, plus the BSA requirement, is a relic of an earlier time.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, there, the, an issue arose, I gather, with the community board and with the borough president about the depth of the proposed overlay, whether it should be 150 feet, as I gather is shown on this drawing, right? And which would include the entire, the entire building? Not quite all, the entire building. And then the notion of cutting it back to 100 feet, I gather, in order to leave out the residential properties on Steinway Street. Could you describe the, you know, the differences between the two boundaries and what your client thinks about the notion of cutting it back to 100 feet?
Sure. We've been talking to our project manager about the idea of cutting back the rezoning area. My understanding is that the rezoning area would be cut back to 100 feet on the Steinway side where the residential building is and stay 150 feet on the 38th Street side in order to accommodate our building. If the entire rezoning area were cut back to a depth of 100 feet, so much of our building would be left out that it, one of the PCE spaces essentially would be cut out, which would make this obsolete.
So your client needs the 150 feet to encompass the entire building?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you to the applicant team.
Thank you.
These are the only people who have signed up to speak, but as always, if anyone else is present who'd like to be heard, now's the time. This public hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 16 and 17, CD7. Number 16, C190202ZMQ. Number 17, N190203ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning the Casino Center rezoning.
We'll have a 10-minute team presentation by an applicant team comprised of Jody Stein, John Clifford, and Nick Brown.
Hi, good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jody Stein. I'm with the law firm of Herrick Feinstein. I'm the land use attorney for the applicant, Kimco. Kimco is here, Nick Brown from Kimco is here, as well as John Clifford from the architecture firm of S9. I'm going to first start with a few minutes on Kimco from the applicant, for him to talk about his company and the property.
Good morning to the Chair and to the Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. First, just want to give you a very brief introduction as far as who Kimco is as a company. For those of you who may not be familiar with us, Kimco is one of the largest owners and operators of open-air shopping centers and mixed-use properties nationally. We've been in business for over 60 years. We're a publicly traded company, and we have over 400 assets from coast to coast, although we are very much a local company headquartered just about 15 minutes away from this project site. I thought it's also helpful for you to understand Kimco's investment strategy as it relates to this property and in general. Typically, we look to improve upon our existing assets through redevelopment. And when we do that, especially in major metropolitan markets, we are long-term holders of our properties. Many sites that we've owned for 30, 40, 50-some-odd years. And the reason why that's important to note is, in contrast to some other developers who will come in, get a project entitled and built, and then immediately flip it, those are investors who are really only interested in the success of a property on day one. And that's in stark contrast to our approach, where our success is inherently intertwined with the long-term success of the property, which is to say that when we design it, we need to make sure that it works, that it makes sense, that it's easily accessible, and that it's convenient to the shoppers, and that it's appropriate for the location in which it's built. Because if it's not, that impacts us in a negative way. As far as this specific site, this is a property that we came to acquire a little over 10 years ago, and the opportunity presented itself to us now, based on the expiration of existing lease terms, to move forward with the redevelopment strategy. This is one that we have planned out over many years because we recognize this site as a tremendous opportunity to improve upon what currently exists there. This is not a property that we originally built or designed, and as such, you know, we recognize, as soon as we purchased it, that there are a number of inherent design flaws with this site in terms of the way it currently operates, the access to it, the impact that the access has on traffic leading out onto Casino Boulevard, as well as the inherent conflict that exists between the rear of the shopping center and the back of house loading and trash for a grocery store that's so close to nearby residents. So we view this as an opportunity to address many of those issues. We'll talk about how we are able to improve upon those. We charged our design team with coming up with an appropriate, responsible development plan, and then we challenged them to go above and beyond that when we heard critique and concerns that came back from Community Board 7, as well as the local civic groups, to address all those concerns in a very meaningful and significant way for the overall improvement of the project. So with that, I'll turn it over to the rest of our team to continue with the presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay. So when we initially came into city planning and we had gone through certification, and just to give you an idea of the project area in, in Flushing, Queens, so we have the rezoning area, which encompasses buildings north of Holly Avenue and then south of Holly Avenue. And you'll see the rezoning area starts mid-block between 45th and Holly and goes all the way from Holly to Laburnum. And the project site is right in the middle of the block on the north, between Holly and Laburnum. So moving forward to the, to the original rezoning, to the original zoning map, there's an R6 zoning district just north of the project area. So the, the zoning currently, as it stands, is a R32, portion of which has a C22 overlay. And when we originally came in and on certification, we're proposing an R7A with a C23 overlay. But as we went through our process with the community board and talking to the community, we have chosen to decrease or downzone our rezoning area and also reduce our rezoning area. So if you look on the left-hand side, you can see the R7A that we proposed, and on the right-hand side is R6A with the C23 overlay. And we reduced the size of the rezoning area by pulling north from Laburnum, which leaves out a problematic neighbor, which was a comment that we heard from the community board. So what we're going to, and this is in response to what we heard on Monday, what we're going to talk to you about today is actually the R6A, which is not what we got certified with, but the R6A that we're seeking. So this is the existing condition. You can see the supermarket in the middle and, and towards the rear of the lot with parking all around the, the lot. And two entrances, one entrance and egress towards Laburnum and another towards Holly, both on Casino. And this is the existing view, looking at the shopping center north on Casino Boulevard. You can see the, the supermarket, which is our applicant site, but you can also see the buildings north of Holly, which are the five- and seven-story buildings that will be brought into compliance with the R6A zoning district that we're proposing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to our proposed development with John Clifford at S9.
Good morning to the Chair and the Commission. My name is John Clifford from S9 Architecture. What's on the screen now is a proposed site plan. What we're showing is a commercial podium with a residential street wall tower that then forms two legs that go to the north to give air and light and a courtyard in the middle. We are proposing one entry to the project site, which will be located opposite Calmia and goes into a two-level underground garage. This is a section showing how the building stacks up. So on the left-hand side, the section is going from Casino to the north to the back of the lot. So one level commercial use, community facility and residential above with a 65-foot street wall, a setback of 10 feet, and then a maximum building height of 85 feet. And then the two levels of parking. two levels of parking below. The other section is a north-south section, so the two legs of the towers are set back a minimum of 30 feet from each of the adjoining property lines for air and light, and then there's a 90-foot courtyard between them. This is a proposed rendering. Jody just showed you what the view looked like now. You can see the five-to-seven-story buildings to the north on Casino. This is a seven, seven-story building reduced from the eight that we had previously applied for in the zoning, commercial base with active storefront along the street. And in the bottom right, that is the entry into the parking garage aligned with the intersection at Calmia. We'll be closing one of the curb cuts that currently exists on Casino for the existing site. This just shows the parking as you come underneath the project. So again, there's one entry, signalized entry, in and out of the parking garage with a very long ramp that allows for queuing to bring you all the way down. We're also proposing the loading in this first level of basement. Right now, on the existing condition, the loading is all back up against the residential zone on the north, and it's unenclosed. This will be for the entire development within the cellar. We're proposing self-parking for the commercial and attended parking for the residential. And then in terms of traffic improvements, we've been working with a traffic engineer in the community, trying to mitigate some of the existing conditions that already exist on Casino Boulevard, as well as address our new development. Beginning on the bottom right, one of the problems is that there is a lot of congestion around Laburnum and Casino. So what we are doing is we are removing some on-street parking spaces, daylighting them to create a right-turn lane into our new signalized entry at Calmia. What that also does is currently at Calmia, there's a crosswalk across Casino, but there is no signalized control for pedestrian safety. So we are adding another crosswalk and obviously having signal controls for pedestrians. We're also removing some other, as you go north on, on Casino, some other on-street parking spaces so that we can create a left-turn lane to mitigate any queuing that goes into the project as they're heading south on Casino. And then finally, on the north end of Casino along our project site, we are closing off the existing curb cut that is almost in line with Juniper Avenue.
And, and this traffic analysis was all in response to and worked directly with the community. They, they had input, we gave them options, and this is what we came up with, and...
At this point, we'll open it up to questions from the Commission. Vice Chair Knuckles.
This question is for Mr. Brown, I believe it was.
Yes.
Kimco is a well-known retail developer of considerable renown. I'm just wondering, is this your maiden voyage with regard to residential, or has Kimco done that before?
Yeah, it's, it's not our maiden voyage. It's certainly an area that's newer for us, you're correct in that. We are in the process of, of opening a larger site in our mid-Atlantic region, just opposite where the H, where the Amazon headquarters are. So that one's in, in progress. We have probably about 1,000 units or so within the portfolio, and then we have another 4,000 that are entitled that we're proceeding with developing now.
Commissioner Ron Prashad.
You guys mentioned before, both the Borough President and the Community Board had concerns about traffic. This is a traffic study prepared. Has DOT provided anything in writing to you that this, they're going to go along with your proposed plan?
So our traffic engineer can take more questions later, but, but our traffic consultant, VHB, has met with DOT. They are positive about the changes. It was a great discussion, and they saw no issues as of now, but we need to continue the conversations.
One more question. I'm having a hard time understanding how you're going to do commercial loading on that ramp. So you have retail, you're going to have a tractor-trailer, trucks, they're going to go down there and then queue out? I mean...
So if you look at the plan on the right, on the screen, the ramp goes all the way down along the right-hand edge. The trucks can turn to the left, and then you can see where the parking stalls are actually radius, the striping there, they can turn right in there, do a 90-degree turn. And in one back move, they can back into the loading docks, so they would, their backs would be facing the left-hand part of the screen. And then when they're done, they pull straight out and go right up the ramp. And Kimco does operate a lot of shopping centers, and what we would do is try to schedule the delivery so it's during off-peak customer hours and things like that.
Commissioner Dweck.
Just to clarify, the Community Board's recommendation was prior to your amendment downward on the zoning application?
So, no, it was with the downward zoning, you know, so, so just to give you some background, we met three times with the Land Use Committee. Each meeting was over two hours long, and we then again presented to the full committee. When we presented to the full committee, we presented with, and what we didn't show you, with the R6A plus restrictions placed on the property, like setbacks, which we agree to, we are, we are fine with. It would be done in restrictive declaration, and it's basically what they listed in their recommendations or requirements is what we would agree to. So there, there was a no vote with all these conditions, and we would meet those conditions.
So they weren't satisfied even with the reduction to an R6A?
They still voted no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Byrne.
Just on that point, I don't quite understand. I mean, obviously, it's not a great thing for us to, you to come here with absolutely no votes whatsoever at the Community Board. And there were, I think there were claims of bad faith on the part of the applicant and so on. I mean, is there any way that you can repair that relationship?
We're still talking to the Community Board. We have not stopped. We've met with them after the Community Board meeting, the leadership. We've met with the civic groups, the, the, you know, when we started this process in 2015, working with the Department of City Planning, so it's been a really long time. We met with the Community Board, we met with the council member, and we are continuing to, you know, work on those relationships. I think we have a lot of support within the community, though that voice may not have been heard. In fact, I believe we have an overwhelming amount of support, it's just that it wasn't heard at the Community Board.
Can I add one remark to that? Yeah, so one of the things that we, we said to the community right out of the gates is that it's very important for us, Kimco, again, being a long-term holder, that we have a partnership with the community. So we, we had extensive conversations, as Jody mentioned, and then we made great strides with them. I think the biggest challenge that we faced was on the U-LARP clock. Quite honestly, we, we felt that we ran out of time with the Community Board, and we were making a lot of headway with them, trying to meet rapidly toward the end, and it was forced to a vote. You know, I think at, at the time of the vote, not everyone was satisfied, but what we said at that vote, even though the clock is running out, we're not going anywhere, we're here to continue to meet with you on an ongoing basis. Our door is open, and we've continued that dialogue.
I will note that we are quite used to, as a commission, of having an applicant come in with a project and then having there be modifications to the project. In this case, though, it seems as if the extent of the changes and the perhaps premature commencement of U-LARP is leading to a situation where the project is being designed on the fly, in a way that has led to the absolute no vote by both the Community Board and the, and the Borough President. Commissioner Delauz.
I'm just wondering if you could speak about the mandatory inclusionary housing piece of this, and what options you're thinking of mapping, and if that's proposed to change at all.
So our, our proposal is not to change, we are mapping option two for 30% and our, I believe it's 55 units of, right, of affordable housing.
And was there an opportunity to really discuss that at the Community Board or with the Queens Borough President? I mean, obviously, it seems like the reactions were on other things and less so on that really critical piece of...
Yeah, so for the Community Board, just to be quite frank, they were not interested in the affordable housing component at all. And with the Borough President, though, we had a very productive and good conversation about it, and I think they were satisfied with that.
Other questions? Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi, good morning. I'm, I'm not surprised that a Community Board assumes that they need many more parking spaces than perhaps they do. And I'm, I'm actually curious from the perspective of Kimco and, and Nick, you know, you, I recall Staten Island project where you requested significant reduction in parking based on your experience of actual utilization. And has that informed, you know, the, the parking here? I know we've got residential, so that creates a different kind of situation, but what has, has been your experience in sort of, and, and how has that informed the parking that's available at this location?
Yeah, and thank you for your question. I mean, you're absolutely correct. When we went through our project in Staten Island, you know, there was a requirement to, to come before, for the Commission for a parking reduction. What we found is that parking for us as a retail operator is the lifeblood of our shopping center. If there's not adequate parking, the tenants fail and Kimco fails. So when we set out to design a project, the first thing we do is a parking analysis and understanding the utilization rates that we've seen based on our tremendous history as a retail operator, and we look at the specific tenants and the uses there, and then we look and see how that aligns with, with the code and, and what's required second. So that's, that's always our starting point, and if we're designing more than what the code requires, then, then that's the case. But we design based around what we believe will be the requirement. So what we saw here, that was what we went ahead and did, we got significant pushback from the community that they wanted to see a tremendous amount more parking than what was required in the code. And in fact, on the residential units, they had asked for us to double the amount of parking, which, you know, we, we had concerns doing, but understanding that it was critically important to them, we said, we'll go ahead and do that. You know, we tried to make the case that parking rates have been in, in decline as far as from a utilization standpoint. We all understand Uber, Lyft, and everything else, and the impact that that's having on people not using cars as frequently. But again, it was important for us to do everything that we could to go above and beyond to satisfy the Community Board 7, as well as civic groups. So that was an overture that we made. I think, you know, we still feel that this project has way more than enough parking, but knowing that that was a sensitive issue, that was something that we were prepared to put on the table in order to move this project forward.
I, I understand your dilemma, and it's, it's certainly a disappointment. You know, the sort of lack of understanding that we often see. I have a question, does that, has that added to the development costs? I see most of this parking is in the cellar.
Yeah, without a doubt. It certainly adds to the cost significantly. That's, yeah, it's a huge cost driver for the project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of challenging for us because we, we get to these projects late in the planning process, but what our Chairwoman described as an attempt to design this thing on the fly may in fact just be a reflection of how U-LARP is supposed to work. You put a proposal out there, you go listen to the community, you make some changes, you come, you know, so the, the public comment does have an impact going through U-LARP. We're often told that Community Board's point of view is irrelevant or can't influence a project, process, project after it's been certified. I think here we have an example where the Community Board and Borough President's comments have, have indeed had an impact. And having been on...
I actually just would like to clarify that the question is the extent of the change and whether there's adequate time. Clearly, we value...
I fully understand. I'm not challenging your characterization, but just observing for those who say that U-LARP doesn't make a difference, that here we have an example where in fact the Community Board and the Borough President, participation in the process has made a difference. And I also have to observe that it is sometimes the case that Community Boards will vote no, just because they really want to be sure that their concerns are addressed, that, you know, deep down fundamentally, the broad-scale, you know, the big shape of the project is okay with them, but their no vote is just an extra hook for their condition. So we have to learn how to interpret these as they go through public hearings. I'm curious to know about the retail vision for this new project. How many retail spaces will there be? Who are the tenants going to be? Are you going back to the large grocery store format, supermarket?
Yeah, so, so there's roughly 50,000 square feet at grade to work with. One of the things that we heard throughout the process is how important the grocery store is to this local community. And again, this is another way in which the, the interests of the community align with Kimco. We make an effort to have the vast majority of our assets that are, that are grocery anchored. The, the number is probably somewhere around 70% or so, or in excess of that. We view having a grocery store within, within the shopping center as a huge plus, and being a public company, that's something that, that we get extra points on, as well as, as analysts recognize the importance of that. So question is, how big will the ultimate grocery store be? Who will the operator be? I think there are many different options on the table. One of the things that we made clear is that we believe in this environment, you know, Kimco has very strong relationships with many different national retailers. We don't necessarily view that as appropriate here in this particular market. We view this as a more appropriate market for local business operators, and we probably envision a more local grocery store here as well, specifically that, one that can address the needs of, of the local demographic. How big that grocery store will be, I think, it's an open question. It, it could take anywhere up. It's possible it could be the entire space, but I think that's probably a little less likely. It may take half to two-thirds of the space, and then we would carve up the balance for, for local stores. But it's, those are just thoughts at this point. We'll certainly need to test the market and see how that responds.
Okay. So, but then regardless of the number of retail tenants you'd have, what's the streetscape experience going to be? Are you going to have a number of storefronts? Is it going to be open, glazing, or is it going to be a nice sidewalk?
You could start in step. That's, that's one of the things that we work with Nick on. In all of his initial conversations with the grocery store, it's probably going to be 30,000 square feet, so we laid it out and tested it where it would be on the back. It would have a smaller frontage because a grocery store doesn't need a lot of windows, and generally, they cover up the glass. And then that allows for smaller shops that are 50 or 60 feet deep along the frontage, so that's what we're showing in the rendering. Just while you asked about the grocery store, food stores, as you know, have a higher parking ratio than other retail dry goods things. We plan this in the most conservative to make sure that we, because we didn't know the size, that we could accommodate a larger grocery store, so the parking number might go down based on the actual building permit use.
I just wanted to add, add one thing on to John's remarks. You know, when we talked about initially, we viewed the site an opportunity to address some of the concerns. One of the challenges is the way that this site is set back, and the storefronts are set back from the road. It creates this experience for pedestrians where they're coming from the sidewalk and then trying to navigate through as cars are parking, trucks are coming in and out. There's an inherent conflict there that we could address in a much better way by bringing those storefronts right out onto the sidewalk and to create a much more enhanced pedestrian experience.
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Ron Prashad.
A quick question about the community facility. Have you chosen a tenant or in discussions with any tenants?
Yeah, so, so no tenants have been selected at this point. We have a number of different options on the table, ranging from a senior center, daycare facility, there was some thought of a preschool, offices for nonprofits. I do want to note for the record that through the process and the outreach with CB7, they made it abundantly clear that they were not interested in seeing any community facility space here. So we told them, you know, we, we approached the project with a blank slate and whatever the community's desire is on that issue. If that was something that was important to them, we were fine with taking it off the table, but you asked what had been considered, so those were some of the thoughts.
Other questions? Then thank you to the applicant team. We will now turn to speakers. Our first speaker will be Ruby Gutierrez, and she will be given five minutes because she will be speaking with an interpreter.
In Espanol, let's see, in Espanol. Buenas tardes. Presidente Lago, miembro de la comisión, me llamo Ruby Gutierrez. Yo trabajo como foreman en Brooklyn Metro T numero uno. Estaba afiliada a 32J por 13 años. Estoy aquí en calidad de residente de Flushing, Queens, a nombre de mi unión para manifestar nuestro respaldo al proyecto del desarrollo y propuestos de la 4615 Casino Boulevard. Como residente de Flushing, me siento contenta a testificar hoy en el respaldo de este proyecto, puesto que traerá necesaria mejoría al vecindario. De las 182 unidades creadas en este proyecto, una tercera parte serán bienvenidas y accesibles a nuestras viviendas permanentes y accesibles que permitan a residentes actuales... a nuestras viviendas permanentes y accesibles que permitan residentes actuales como yo podamos seguir formando parte de esta comunidad. Este proyecto incluye asimismo otras inversiones que mejorarán la calidad de vida, tales como una tienda de combustibles modernizada además de cambios para disminuir el tráfico. Como afiliada de la 32BJ, tengo el gusto de respaldar este proyecto debido al compromiso del constructor que creará empleados y permanentes que pagarán salarios pervasientes. Me siento orgullosa de respaldar este proyecto que le ofrecerá mi vecino la oportunidad de tener un empleo tan bueno como el mío. La resunificación de Casino Center es un ejemplo de proyecto de desarrollo responsable que conllevan a significados beneficios para la comunidad. El equipo de este proyecto está presentado a atención de la comunidad y se esfuerza para asegurarse que mejore el vecindario de manera que nos incluya a todos. En la 32BJ percibimos este proyecto como un claro ejemplo del desarrollo responsable. Les pedimos a ustedes un respaldo que perdure este proyecto. Gracias.
Good morning, Chair Lago, Chair Lago and members of the commission. My name is Ruby Gutierrez. I work as a foreman in Metro Tech in Brooklyn and have been a member of 32BJ for 13 years. I am here today as a resident of Flushing, Queens, and on behalf of my union to express our support for the proposed project at 4615 Casino Boulevard. As a resident of Flushing, I am happy to testify today in support of this project as it will bring much needed improvements to the neighborhood. Of the 182 units created by this project, one-third would be affordable. We need permanently affordable housing that will be an opportunity for current residents like me to stay in the community. This project also includes other investments that will improve quality of life, like an updated grocery store and changes to decrease traffic. As a union member, I am pleased to support this project because of the developer's commitment to create good permanent jobs that pay prevailing wage. I am proud to be a support at this project that will give my neighbors a chance to have a good job like mine. The Casino Center zoning is an example of responsible development that comes with significant community benefits. This development team is listening to the community and working to make sure the project improves the neighborhood in an inclusive way. At 32BJ, we see this project as an example of responsible development. We respectfully request that you approve this project. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Gutierrez. Thank you. Our next speaker is Terrence Park, who will be followed by Yi Chen.
Good morning, Madam Chair and the commission, distinguished members of the commission and secretary and the audience. Good morning to all. My name is Terrence Park. I'm a longtime resident in Flushing and longtime community board seven member. After the March Community Board Seven meeting, I found out undeniable truth and support by the community and by the neighbors and surrounding areas of residents and organizations in our community. They want, they want replacement of a badly deteriorating shopping mall with diverse, one-stop, enhanced shopping mall in their neighborhood. They don't want to go down, all the way down to Flushing downtown. They want to shop and enjoy their amenity and their neighborhood within their community. They want to see diverse retail stores. They want to see affordable parking spaces. They want to see affordable housings and affordable daycare and senior centers and so on and so forth. Now, existing shopping mall has only 98 parking spaces, and the cars fills on the streets and there's, you know, traffic jams and creating a lot of chaos in the parking lot and outside the streets. And by the demand by the community, and the Kimco developer is gracious enough to increase the parking lot up to almost 400. I believe it is almost like 398 parking spaces. That will greatly reduce the traffic situation there. So, you know, with this overwhelming support from the community, civic associations and groups and overwhelming residents surrounding area, I believe the project has merit. And I would like to implore the commission to give a fair attention to the voice of our community, not only instead of a small, strong voices in our community, but entire voices of our community and allow Kimco to reach the common ground for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Park. Commissioner Dweck.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you are a CB7 member?
Absolutely, yes, I am. I am a CB7 member for 20 years.
And you're in support of the project, I take it from that?
No, I, you know, as we discussed, the U-LR process and including myself, majority of community board seven was not really into this project, unaware about the project. We just heard strong voice from the community, the civic association coming to public hearing, and they were all against it. So including myself, we just went along with oppositions. So I voted no. We all.
But now you're in support.
Yes, I'm absolutely support for the community, I mean, on this project, because there are overwhelming support for this, for this project from the neighbors and civic associations and groups and organization in our community.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi.
Hi.
There are any of these civic associations or other residents willing to go on the record and show this in the letter?
Absolutely, yes, I believe so, yes.
Because right now, we only really have one side.
I understand.
And to hear you say, it's interesting, but it would be helpful to have some documentation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you for your remarks. I just want to clarify. So it was after the community board vote that was in the negative that you became aware of what you now characterize as overwhelming support.
Yes, I do, yes. I'm a community activist, and I have a political club, and there are many members in our club. And I was able to hearing from our neighbors in that area and from my political club members. And I reached out to speak about this project to many civic associations and religious leaders and community leaders. And they overwhelmingly support this project. You see, their view is this, development is unstoppable in Flushing. It's going to happen anyway, and there will be development everywhere. And now we have an existing shopping mall, which is not very clean and creating a lot of traffics. And they want to see better shopping mall, enhanced amenity, diverse shopping mall, and better parking situations, and affordable housings, affordable daycare, and so on and so forth, to fulfill their living standard in higher ground. And therefore, I was very deeply convicted to support this project, and I'm here standing to testify.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker is Yi Chen, who will be followed by Alfred Young.
I'm the building owner across the from Kimco property. I think for my personal opinions, the community, number one, the community needed to change. The shopping center, the parking, and always have slows, kind of dirty. So keep same thing as 20 years more. So we committee need to change. And number two, committee need a job, new job, not keep same thing, something new come up. Of course, everybody have different opinions, but I think we need to accept something to be changed. Not keep everything same. That's my, come here to support Kimco's idea, rezone in the property and make a community nice and clean. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Alfred Young, followed by Jack Zhang.
Hello. Hello, my name is Alfred Young. I'm from VHB. I'm actually the traffic engineer on this project. So I believe there's a question about, that's related to DOT approval. So I'm here to address any questions related to traffic on this project.
I think you had heard one before.
Anything in writing from DOT, any commitment with regards to your proposal? Yeah, so for the, we, the initial EAS, we had worked with DCP and DOT to work on a number of traffic improvements, including a traffic signal at the entrance, the proposed entrance at Casino Boulevard and Calmia Avenue. And after we went back and forth with the community board, who we work very closely with, and, and there's a positive experience, understand their current issues and how we can resolve and make things better for them, we went back to DOT. What you saw in that presentation summarizes two major things. One is that they wanted to have those turn lanes into this entrance. So we worked with DOT, and we got positive feedback, and there's a pathway to make that happen. And then the second thing that they asked for, and we're still in the process of working with, but we also got positive feedback on, is that the community board wants to decommission a traffic signal at Juniper Avenue where the existing exit is today, because it's so close to the Holly Avenue section. So it's caused a little issues in terms of traffic queuing, and it's not popular. And we reached out to DOT, and they agreed because of the changing conditions, it makes a lot of sense. We're just preparing the documentation for them so that they could officially approve that as well.
Other questions? Thank you. Our next speaker is Jack Zhang, followed by John Neal.
It's an honor for me to speak after my opinion here. I strongly support Casino Center project for the following reasons. First, Casino Center project will beautify this area. I'm a small business owner. I have been doing business here for over 10 years, like most buildings nearby, over like 60 years, some buildings over 100 years. Like this area, I haven't seen any major development, like for more than like 20 years, 30 years, no any change. So compared with other parts of Flushing, this area is too old, very old. Second, I support the project because the project will provide affordable housing and job opportunities. The number of affordable housing in New York City is decreasing. And also, a lot of people in Flushing, they need jobs. Some opponents to the project said, we have jobs, we don't need like affordable housing. I think those ideas are very selfish. Third, some opponents worry about the project will bring a lot of people, a lot of new residents to Flushing. I cannot agree with this one either. Why Flushing is very special? Why? Because like Flushing each year, a lot like new residents will move in from other parts of like USA, of other parts of like world. So even like when the economy was bad in other parts, like Flushing was always good because we always have constant flux of new residents. Actually, a serious problem faced by New York is more and more people are leaving the city alarming rate. As a small business owner, I understand deeply, more people, more business. Force some opponents to the project. They said like, I have lived here like for 50 years. I don't want to see any change of this area. I think like it's, the idea also very ridiculous. Flushing is already totally different from like it was 50 years ago. It's unrealistic to remain the same. Every several years, when I went back to my hometown in China, so I like, I see a lot of change. Each year, big difference, big difference, getting better and better. But here, I'm an American resident, but I haven't seen any like major development here for so long. Even, even Amazon headquarters too, was like, was delayed, was postponed because some people opposed against it. So I'm an American citizen. I hope from the bottom of my heart that America can develop as fast as China's doing now. While, you know, like I attended like a committee board seven meeting in March, I noticed like a very strong phenomenon. More than 75% like people in Flushing like Asian community. But the majority of the board members, they're white, like they control the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Zhang. If you have written testimony, we'd very much welcome having it submitted.
Okay.
You could give it to the secretary and questions?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Zhang, would you be willing to take questions from Commission 11?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, you mentioned you're a small business owner. Is your business nearby the?
Yeah, my business is just like one block away from the project. It's on Holly Avenue.
Okay. And I guess you did tell us that more residents mean more, more business for you. But what, if you were advising Kimco about the kinds of businesses they should put in this new shopping center, what do you, what kind of retail would be good for the neighborhood and good for your business?
My business like is like a test prep center. So like, actually, like this part, because like no major development for so long, like other parts in Flushing develop so fast. So like a lot of people moved to other place. This, this part is very desolate. So like, our business actually is decreasing for the last 10 years. So we want like Kimco, like can work economic engine to attract, like promote the major development in the surrounding area, kind of attract more people move to this place.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Also, like I want to mention another things. Actually, like most Chinese community, actually in this area, I live there, also I'm living there. Like I have been living here more than 10 years. Like 90% people living there are Asian community. They want the development. They want more people to come in. But the committee board seven is like most people like are white.
Mr. Zhang, at this point, it's answering the questions, and Commissioner Delo has a question.
I would just say, I appreciate you coming, taking time away from your business to come and testify today. And I would just say that, you know, it's really great, your reflections on what's going on in the community and the openness to change. And I would just hope that perhaps you can follow up with the local council member and the borough president to express interest in joining the community board.
Yeah, I will. Actually, I tried to, I tried to talk to like the president, like borough president, but they said process is hard, hard to change the, like board members. They said like those board members has been like in the committee for so long.
Term limits now.
Yeah, more than 20 years, 30 years.
You'll be pleased that there was a charter.
Yeah, it's my pleasure.
You'll be pleased that there was a charter change to impose term limits on community board members.
Yeah, one.
So there may be opportunities for you to follow up on Commissioner Delo's suggestion.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Our next speaker is John Neal, who will be followed by Amy Wu. Mr. Neal doesn't wish to speak, okay. Then Amy Wu.
My name is Amy Wu, and I'm a managing member of the company that holds lot one and lot five on the map. So I am for the rezoning. When our building was built in the mid-'70s, it was also built with inherent problems, just, just like the building next door, Kimco owns. So I believe the community really needs more modern buildings and better appearance. And I'm pretty sure it will help the community. It will bring more business opportunities and jobs to the neighborhood. And I believe the younger generation would appreciate that. Although I understand that some people on the other side of Casino are against that. And I understand that some of the civic group members are against that. But I believe we do plan to hold the properties for a long time, and we believe that this will greatly benefit the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you for coming. I know these hearings are during the day, and it can be hard to get here, so it's very much appreciated.
You're welcome.
You know, we're hearing support here. We do understand that at the community board that there's that there's a unanimous no vote. Did folks have a chance to participate in that opportunity? I mean, did any of you speak at the community board, or what's-
I don't think I was invited to the community board, but I did go to the one at the borough president, the meeting at the-
Oh, you went to the borough president's office. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Levin.
I'm sorry, you mentioned you own lot five?
I own lot one, yes.
Which one is that?
They're all part of the rezoning.
Yes, but are you one of the corner of Liburnum?
Yes. No, 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 the one on the corner of Holly and Casino.
On the other side.
Yes, we're right next to Kimco's building.
Okay, but on the other side from-
On Casino and Holly. We're right on the corner.
Excellent. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Thank you, Ms. Wu.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And those are the only folks who have signed up to speak on this matter. But if others are interested, that would be the time to come forward. No, I'm sorry, we can't have repeat speakers. I should have clarified if anyone else. Okay, well, then the public hearing is closed. And Madam Secretary, anything else on the agenda?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you.